Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tom Jones is here from the City Rescue Mission. He'll lead us in the invocation afterwards. I'll ask Councilman Shadid if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Please bow your heads and let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful summer morning that you've given us together and do business on behalf of the city. We pray, God, that you would just bless this meeting today, that we would seek your wisdom and guidance in the things that need to be decided upon today, Lord, and also just this amazing morning where so much can be celebrated in the progress that's taking place in our city. Lord, we love you today, ask for your guidance, and give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to begin this morning with the installation of our youth council. So Debbie, you want to have the youth counselors come up and stand behind their prospective youth counselors? We've been doing this about 15 years, and we search across the city of Oklahoma City, and in each ward, two young people are selected to go through a program that allows them to learn more about city government and be exposed to all the wonderful things that Oklahoma City has to offer. There are also two students that are chosen at large to work with the mayor's office. And this is a pretty illustrious group. How about one round of applause just for the group in its entirety? And Debbie?
Here, I'd like to introduce Joyce Henderson and Rick Kane. Of course, Rick is known to many of us who will be serving as the program co-chairs this year.
Wonderful. Thank you for your work. And we'll just go around the horseshoe. And James, you want to introduce your youth counselors?
First one we have is Andrew Osalee. He is a senior at Putnam City North High School. He is a member of the National Honor Society and Spanish Club. Andrew is also a three-year letterman and two-year OSSAA state qualifier in swimming. Andrew feels that the high school dropout rate and teen suicide are major concerns for the youth of Oklahoma City, and that more counselors and mentors should be readily available to help students in need. He currently holds the number-two spot academically at Putnam City North with a 4.58 GPA. Andrew gives 100% in all he does, and it shows in his academic and community involvement. Let's give Andrew a round of applause. Then you have a family that you want to introduce.
Yes. My dad, Najit, is here. And my mom, Sheri, is here. And then my sister, Alexandria, is also here.
And Isabel Gibson is a second representative of Ward 1. She is a senior at Putnam City High School. She is currently ranked number-one out of 380 students in academics, holding a 4.56 GPA. Isabel is a member of the Varsity Palm Squad, National Honor Society, Junior Leadership, and the Prom Committee. She received the Masonic Lodge Student of the Year Award in 2014. Isabel volunteers with the St. Jude Walk for children and the local food bank. She believes that poverty and underage drinking are two challenges the youth in Oklahoma City are currently facing. She believes that awareness and fundraising could help to solve these problems. Everybody give a round of applause for Isabel.
I have my parents, John and Ellie, my brother Dalton, my aunt Laura, my grandparents, Karen, Janice, and Ray.
We have two great students in Ward 2. They're both excellent students, interested in healthcare, health of our citizens. Evan Bostick is a senior at John Marshall High School, plays multiple sports, National Honor Society, Air Force ROTC, has an interest in obesity and nutrition of our kids. His parents are Marjorie and Eric. And Victoria Maxwell, well, you want to introduce your parents?
Marjorie and Eric.
And Victoria Maxwell is a senior at Harding Fine Arts Academy. She is also interested in education and poverty. She has an interest in psychiatric, being a psychiatric nurse practitioner. And you want to introduce your mother?
Yes. I would like to thank Laura Maxwell for being here. Thank you.
This is an exciting day for Ward 3. It's Western Heights Day. Both of our students are from Western Heights. First up is Jenny Ha. Jenny is a junior at Western Heights. She was vice president of her sophomore class, has been a member of the student council both her freshman and sophomore year. She's a member of the Key Club. She was on the cross-country team for a while but decided to be the manager instead, a very wise move. She believes her peers struggle to find motivation to continue their education after high school, so she's concerned about that. She's also concerned about getting parents involved in their students' educational options and also getting involved in extracurricular activities. So let's welcome Jenny Ha.
My mom is here today, Lone, and my sister, Amy.
And then again, from Western Heights High School senior, Miguel Chavez. Miguel is looking at a career in business, has been looking at the University of Chicago. He was selected last year as the outstanding male cross-country runner at Western Heights, and he gave up going on a run this morning to come down here where it's really cool and relaxing, so another wise decision. One of the problems that he sees is the teen pregnancy problem, and he'd like to involve the students to work on that. So please welcome Miguel Chavez.
My mom's here, Latisha, and my little brother, Jesse. They're both back there.
This morning, I want to introduce you to Jocelyn Garcia. She's the, will be one of my two youth councils this year. She's a senior at Southeast. That's really all I really need to say about her, really. But as this week from next Friday, I'll be holding the reunion at my house for the 60th year since my graduation from Southeast. So I'm very pleased that someone from Southeast is on the list this year. Jocelyn's made the superintendent's honor role all three years in high school, serves on the city council, the Key Club, and the Link Crew. She volunteers at Integris Southwest, which has inspired her to pursue a career in the medical field. Child poverty is a concern, as she sees, among her peers in Oklahoma City. She believes that if the community works together to feed and care for these children, it will be the step in the right direction. In her spare time, she enjoys dancing. She has taken classes for several years and feels it is one way that she can express herself. Would you like to introduce your parents?
My amazing mother is here, Alicia Perez.
My other youth council member today has not made it yet. He's from Crooked Oak. He will be the first person ever from Crooked Oak to serve as a youth council member. Having gone to Southeast, at the time I went there, Crooked Oak was a major rival in sports. We were both about, the schools were both about the same size. And since he's not here, I'll go ahead and tell you that Southeast's first football victory in 1950, the year the school opened, was a six-to-nothing win over Crooked Oak. But his name is Isaiah Caldwell. He's a senior at Crooked Oak, he's a member of the National Honor Society, holds the title of salutatorian for his class, and plays on several varsity sports teams. At school, he sees himself as a role model for younger students in his work to create study groups for students in need of special help. Isaiah is concerned about how the major budget cuts to education, amen, will affect the youth of Oklahoma City. He thinks education could improve if more opportunities to learn specific trades were offered to those not college-bound. He applied to the youth council to help make a positive impact on his community. He's not here, but I want to welcome him to being a youth council member.
And working with the mayor's office, we'll have Connor Olson and Elizabeth Cordova. Connor is a senior at Deer Creek High School. He's a member of the student council and has served in leadership positions each year. Connor also serves on the Teen Advisory Board for Hope Chest OKC, which is an organization that provides beds to children and families in need. One of the top issues that he's seen is the need for more foster families in Oklahoma City. The number of kids in the foster care system goes up each year. He has raised money for the Anna's House Foundation, and even though they've raised $114,000, he'd like you to know that that's not enough. He'd like to see higher incentives for those families that take in foster children. Would you show your appreciation to the work of Connor Olson?
Okay. Today, I have my lovely mother, Carrie, my dad, Lee, my little brother, Caleb, my wonderful aunt, Jan, and my cousin, Jackson.
Elizabeth Cordova is a senior at Mount St. Mary Catholic High School. She is a member of the National Honor Society, the National Spanish Honor Society, varsity softball, and the Key Club. She was also named Mount St. Mary Defensive Player of the Year. Liz has been closely following the presidential race. She says it seems to her the youth of Oklahoma City know little about the candidates or the issues, and their opinions belong to other people. She believes people her age need to be more informed and participate in her future. She is excited to join the campus ministry team at her school this fall. Let's show our appreciation of Elizabeth.
Today, I have my parents, Peter Cordova and Stephanie Cordova, and my lovely grandmothers, Emma Cordova and Patricia Peak, and I also have a friend of the family, Rick.
From Ward 5, we've got two great students. First, Trevor Davis, and then Phi Yin Nguyen. Trevor's a senior at Southmore High School. He's a class, he's the secretary for his class, and he's also a member of the school disciplinary committee, National Honor Society, student council, and he's also the athletic trainer. He's been awarded the Masonic Student of Today Award twice, which is quite an accomplishment. Poverty is a major focus that he would like to work with this year, and also try to provide additional support for teachers and staff as they work with the students this upcoming year. Trevor, I do have a question. Is this the year that, and hopefully it's going to be Southmore, that we finally see a team from the West take the 6A football championship?
Yes, definitely. That is for sure.
Great. Well, would you please introduce your guests this morning?
I brought my mother, Terri, my father, Mike, and my brother, Tyler.
The other student representing Ward 5 is Phi Yin Nguyen, and she's a senior at Class and School of Advanced Studies. She's served on the student council for three years and is also the class secretary and also the class historian. This past year, she was the team captain for the rowing team and a member of the National Honor Society. She volunteers at a variety of places, including Integris Baptist Hospital, Focus on Home, Oklahoma Food Bank, Oklahoma Humane Society, and other organizations. She sees substance abuse, mental illness, and homelessness as issues her peers are facing in Oklahoma City, and would like to see more opportunities for education on mental illness and substance abuse, and believes bringing those studies into the classroom could help the students better adjust to things. So please welcome me, help me welcome Phi Yin. And Phi Yin, would you introduce your guests?
Hi. I brought my parents, Belan Nguyen and Hung Nguyen, and I also brought my older sister, Katherine Nguyen, my older brother, Deng Hui Nguyen, and my younger brother, Deng Nguyen Nguyen.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce to you the young students who've been selected to represent Ward 6, Katherine McConnell and Juan Trujillo. Kate is a junior at Bishop McGinnis Catholic High School. She's involved in speech and debate, rowing, Model UN, glee clubs, swim, National Honor Society, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and many more clubs. Running out of breath. Kate has volunteered with the Girl Scouts of Western Oklahoma, a cause very near and dear to my heart, Kate, and she's an ambassador at Science Museum, Oklahoma. Kate believes that the lack of knowledge on current events and topics facing our city really limit the youth of our city. Kate thinks those who are not aware of the bills and cases that are being addressed in our courts are limited on their ability to raise their voice and advocate for something they may truly believe in. A great thing to be concerned about. Please welcome Kate to the youth council.
Hi, I'm Kate, and today I brought my mother, Lisa, and my father, Jeff, and six of my closest friends came out to support me today.
Thanks. And my second youth counselor this year is Juan Trujillo. Juan is a senior at US Grant High School. He plays soccer and runs cross-country for the Generals. Juan wishes his peers would have more interest in education and opportunities to learn about their options. He believes having speakers on a variety of opportunities at schools in Oklahoma City would help. Juan is a member of the League of United Latin American Citizens Youth Council and currently serves as president of his school's chapter. He's excited to be on the youth council because he would like to gain leadership experience and better his community at the same time. We're excited to help you do that, Juan. I know you said your parents were both at work today. Did you bring some friends with you, or are you here on your own? All righty, well, let's give a-
Thanks to everyone that came today.
Let's give a warm welcome to Juan. There you go.
I'm sorry. I thought Meg was still talking. I'm sorry. Ward 7, it's blessed to have two great students. The first student is Christian Coleman. Christian Coleman is a junior at Millwood High School and plays football. I hope we are able to bring the 2A championship back.
We will, we will.
Okay, okay, okay. And also serves as the student council vice president. He currently sits number-two in his class in academics and recently was accepted into Francis Toto Bioscience and Medicine Academy. Christian volunteers at his church, maintaining the yard along with his brother. He believes that youth in Oklahoma City need more opportunity to network with community leaders in each other. As a part of the youth council, Christian said he would have a better outlook on other communities in Oklahoma City and share that news with the future leaders of Oklahoma City. Christian, please tell us who you have with us and welcome.
Today, I have my grandparents, Marie Stanfield and Ransom Stanfield, my principal, Petra Woodard, my grandfather, Johan Kimbrough, and my parents, Andre and Felicia Coleman.
Let's welcome Coleman. Our next student for Ward 7 is Ishmael Gomez. Ishmael Gomez is a senior at Santa Fe High School. He is involved in student council and LULAC. Ishmael is also involved in 2M2L, Too Much to Lose. Too Much to Lose is a club for drug and alcohol awareness. He is a member of the National Honor Society and has completed over, and I repeat, he has completed over 200 hours of community service outside of the school. 200, that's a lot of hours. Ishmael wished his classmates had more information on college opportunities and understanding that going to college is a great option. He thinks, he thinks having college kids visit schools to speak to students about their options would be helpful to the people who live in south-side Oklahoma City. Ishmael, who did you bring with us this morning?
Fortunately, my parents couldn't make it, but it's a pleasure to be here with all of you guys, and thank you.
Let's welcome Ishmael.
It's an honor to welcome two students from Ward 8. We have two outstanding students. The first is Max Bro. Max Bro is a senior at Putnam City North High School. He has served as the president for his junior class and the drama club, which is quite interesting. When I tell you this, he was the 2016 Regional and District Champion in humorous duet action. And by doing that, he qualified for the national tournament. And so, Max, I'm hoping someday you can get me tickets to Saturday Night Live or Second City.
You know I will.
Can you, can you please introduce your family, and thanks for being here?
Thank you. Today, I have my mother, Ruby, my father, Ronald, my sister, Stacy, and my uncle, Martin.
Everybody please stand. Congratulations, Max. Our next outstanding candidate is Matt Loper. He's from Crossings Christian School. He's a junior at Crossings. And this makes me tired when I read all this. He is a member of the student council, the academic team, the Spanish Club, the band, the National Honor Society, peer tutoring, and more. You do a lot. That's wonderful. He is a member of the Boy Scouts for 10 years. He's been an Eagle Scout for two years. His counselor describes him as humble and honorable. He plays the cello and the saxophone, and he not only plays them, your first chair has to each, right? So I'm hoping someday you can get me into Carnegie Hall or the Kennedy Center, okay? Please introduce your parents, Matt.
Yes, I'm here with my mother, Amy Loper. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, that concludes the festivities with the youth council, and they will retreat off the stage and enter into an incredible program this school year. I guess with schools starting at some schools yesterday, some of these may be heading into class today. All right, we're on item 3A of the council agenda. To make it official, we'll need a motion to approve the appointment of the youth council. All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Item 3B is an appointment to the Pioneer Library System Board. Is there a motion there? All right, cast your votes. Hit passage unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the journal for July 19th, and item 4B is to approve the journal for July 5th. All right, any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Hit passage unanimously. Item 5 is a request for uncontested continuances.
A few this morning. The first one is on the Concurrent Stockade on page 18. It's item 8M1, 8M1 on page 18, and that was deferred at the school trust meeting on July 19th, so we'd ask that that be deferred until August 30th. And then moving to page 22, under item 9G1, item C, 1214 Northwest 27th Street. We ask that that be stricken, the owner is removed. Item G, 20532 Southeast 95th Street. We ask that that be stricken, the owner has removed. And then page 23, under item 9I1A, 19 East California. We ask that that be stricken, owner secured. Item B, 4617 East Street. We ask that that be stricken, owner has secured. Item D, 529 West Hill. We ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item F, 4203 Laverne Avenue. We ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item L, 1212 Northwest 27th Street. We ask that that be stricken, the owner is removed. Item P, 2424 Northwest 40th Street. We ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. And under item 9J1, item A, 19 East California. We ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item B, 4617 East Street. We ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item E, 4203 Laverne Avenue. We ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item K, 1212 Northwest 27th Street. We ask that that be stricken, the owner has removed. And item L, 1214 Northwest 27th Street. We ask that that be stricken, the owner has removed.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we have one request for a revocable permit today. Is anyone here with one healthy bod? All right, well, they're requesting to hold the One Healthy Bod Sizzling 6K August 6th downtown. That's in Ward 6 and 7. Meg, you and John, okay with this?
I think so. Drew, is everything good with permit? All righty, then we should be good to go. Move approval.
All right, cast your votes.
Passage unanimously. We'll assess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are six items. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Hit passage unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. All right, we have a motion in a second on the PPA. Any comments or questions on any of these items? All right, cast your votes. Hit passage unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convened as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Three items, and I think we're going to have a presentation.
We are. We have a presentation this morning on item B, and item B is a significant, a significant item. We've had presentations on this in the past that have led up to the decision point that we're at today, but as we know, that solid waste services is one of our highest-rated services that we have out there, and it's our desire to take that and to grow it and make it even a higher-rated service. And with that, our Acting Utilities Director, Brett Weingard, is here this morning to lead us through the presentation. Good morning.
Good morning.
So the current solid waste services for our contract we've had for almost 14 years is scheduled to end August 31 of this year. And with that in mind, OC solicited proposals, which you considered, and awarded a contract to Waste Management to start a new contract beginning September of this year. And with that new program, there's the opportunity to enhance services to meet customer desires that were expressed in focus groups and surveys to the public as a part of formulating the RFP that OC issued and contracting with Waste Management that went forward with that. And today, what we're here to talk about is the opportunity for OC to offer 96-gallon wheeled recycling containers to the public and to open up the opportunity for rural recycling initiative for the four zones in the rural part of the city. So with that, we have a three-phase project. The first phase is a preparatory phase, the second phase is a delivery phase, and then the third phase that will take much longer, which is changing behaviors on how we set out waste. With Phase 1, what we have looked at is that Waste Management delivered the original carts-
With Phase 1, what we have looked at is that Waste Management delivered the original carts in 1993-94 timeframe and has not done a major rerouting since then. And since they serve largely the western half of the urban area and all of the rural area, they are in need of a major reroute activity. The best time to do that is now, prior to converting to the 96-gallon every-other-week recycling service. So we will need to do that in concert with them. We're also looking at one other option that has to do with the possibility that we might modify the area that the city collects to be more concentric around the Hefner and Portland vicinity where we have our facility right now, where our trucks are stored next to the Hefner Water Treatment Plant. We'll be looking at all that and come back with, with options for that. We'll also need to construct four pad sites for the rural recycling area, and we'll do extensive public education programming along with that, so customers will learn the changes that will be made in what they can collect or set out for service, how they set out, when they set out, what their day changes will be, and that we will also be allowed to start putting cardboard in the 96-gallon recycling containers into the rural recycling stations, which is something customers have wanted to do for some time. With Phase 2, on February 1st of 18, we'll begin the new recycling program. Customers, like I said, will have day changes. We won't know how many customers will be affected till we do the analysis and come up with the options for efficiency. The goal whenever you do recycling is to look at the future, how you continue to grow, and making sure you have capacity so you have the fewest number of day changes over time. So that, we take that into consideration. This, this schedule is a little bit preliminary because we have to do the analysis first. We think that this, this schedule will work well. Waste Management has bought into this schedule, but if for some reason we have a delay in the delivery of the carts, or they have delays in delivery of the trucks, it could shift a month or two. On Phase 3, Phase 3 is longer term. What we're wanting to move to is something called pay-per-throw, which means that all of the waste you set out would be billable, where we would be able to, to have it in a container. In Oklahoma City, we're behind some of the other cities who've already gone further into pay-as-you-throw. As an example, you saw probably if you read the article in the paper, some of the other cities, it appears as if their rates are a little lower than ours. They have an out-of-cart service. Basically, they have the one cart and everything extra, like you want to set out bags, $1.50 a bag in Edmund, as an example. We don't charge for bag service. We'd like to not be charging for every individual bag, or we'd have to count every individual bag and add that to the bill. So there are a lot of problems when you start trying to go down that road. So our service is all included at our fee, and with that change into the 96-gallon recycling, we believe that over time, customer more and more of the waste will move from the regular Big Blues into the recycling container. So it will get to the point where customers won't need to have as many Big Blues as they would think they would need right now if we started containerizing all the bags. We went from a point in time before we started the changes back in 2002 where about 24.5% of all the waste was set outside of the cart, and almost all of our customers only had one cart. Now, we have a lot of customers with three carts, two carts, and you get two carts as a part of your base fee. So when we give them a 96-gallon recycling container, they'll now have up to three carts at no additional cost. They can, they will, we're also proposing to lower the cost of that extra cart to the $2.25 as an extra encouragement, economic encouragement for people to containerize yard waste. And we think that will be very helpful in moving that direction. So actually, a customer with a 96-gallon recycling container and a Big Blue will have another Big Blue to help them containerize their yard waste, and if they want another cart after that, they can get one for $2.25. So pay-as-you-throw basically encourages recycling, mulching, composting, reusing products, waste minimization, things like that. And a lot of that has to do with education. So we'll be, we'll be ramping up the public education activities along with all of this to move forward. When we see that we have largely migrated to more containerization, then we'll be able to come back to you and recommend that we direct Waste Management to go from the picking-up-bag service to, to not picking-up-bag service. But that's many years down the road, because we're going to have to go through the, the public initiative of moving people to that new way of behavior before we go to that direction. With that, we will then save about $200,000 a year in billings from Waste Management when we migrate to 100% containerization. And with that, we're open. Any questions you have?
Just want to point out, we've really, I, I think, changed the culture out of solid waste regarding customer service. It really, they understand what, what it's all about, and the person that has changed that culture out there is Jim Lynn, and Jim's on the right side of the, of the first row and has done a fantastic job of, of changing the whole mindset in the solid waste. And behind Jim is Rick Paget with Waste Management, who will be the contractor. And as you recall, we have, we have a split service. Waste Management does the lion's share of all the recycling and the lion's share of the, of the pickup, but the, we also have crews who do about 40% of the residential pickup.
All right, any questions for Brett or on the presentation? All right, Brett, thank you. We'll need a motion on the EAT. All right? Cast your votes. Passage unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move that back, such as individual consideration.
All right, are there any individual considerations on the consent docket? Pete? AB?
And Francis, I just had a quick correction. If I could do that right on 7Q, I believe it's Ward 4 instead of Ward 6 for Old Capitol Hill. Thank you.
All right, Pete, you want to jump in with AB?
I have 7A.
AD, okay.
AB is just a receipt of the Consultative Review Committee report concerning some improvements are going to be made in Southern Oaks Park in front of Palmer League School. There were some questions raised during this, during that Wellness Center project about whether or not this could happen, and does the city, is the city going to fulfill its commitment? This is the first step toward fulfilling that commitment. We're going to build that road that'll, that'll make it, the park circulate much better and be a big assist to the parents there that pick up and, and drop off their kids in front of Palmer League Grade School. I just wanted to make sure we, people that were concerned about it have an opportunity to realize that we are serious about it, and we have the money, and we are one step at a time going forward with the project. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And Mark, AD?
Your Honor, I asked that Doug Cooper come and speak just briefly about Martin Nature Park. There's been a lot that's happened out there over the last year, and I want all the citizens of Oklahoma City to know what a great place it is to go to yourself or take your family. And so I asked Doug to speak a little bit about the things that are occurring at Martin Nature Park, please.
Good morning. Thank you, Doug Cooper. Martin Park is one of those jewels on the north side of town that, that a lot of different activities take place, and a lot of positive programming is now being done by our naturalists up there. And when we had an opportunity from the 2007 bond program to do improvements to the building, we took a hard look at, at, at the building itself, how people access the building and things along those lines. We realized that the front door actually faces the creek, so people coming in from the parking lot really don't know how to access the building where it's at. So we want to make an entry facade facing the parking lot so people will have more of a welcoming, welcoming situation. Plus, the exhibits are getting a little old and tired, a little antique-ish. We want to bring those into the, the next generation of exhibits, again, for the purposes of better programming and better abilities for our naturalists to, to impart what the Oklahoma natural environment is all about and why we are preserving and protecting these, these parcels of land that are still pretty much pristine from when our forefathers came to Oklahoma City. So, so it's a little, little bit of brand new, a little bit of refreshing that's going to go on at Martin Park, but it'll make it more attractive and I think an even better experience for our citizens to go with the work that, that has been done with the accessible trail systems that we have out there from Integris and so forth. So be happy to answer any other questions.
All right, questions for Doug?
Just mention the trails as far as the handicap access, if you could, briefly.
The, the trail system that was done by outside organization fundraising and the Wilderness Matters LLC that did the fundraising, Jim Thorpe Rehabilitation Hospital participated in, in the funds for this, but it makes the park that much more accessible, that much more inviting to all of our citizens. We've got some other phases that are still planned so that the, both the hearing impaired as well as the site impaired can get out and enjoy the park that much more. We'll have some signs that'll have braille and things along those lines. But again, the use of the park has skyrocketed in the last two years out there. People getting out even and just jogging through the park. So, so the accessible trail system isn't done. The first phase is completed. It's a great space for all of our people, whether they're physically challenged or mobile, to be able to use and get out and enjoy the, the wildlife that inhabits Martin Park.
Your Honor, I get the privilege of driving by the park each morning going to work, and you look at it, two years ago, not much activity in the parking lot in the morning, but it's amazing to see cars there in the morning and when, in the evening when I'm driving home from work, there are a lot of cars there. It's a great place, and it's good to see it's being used more and more.
Why don't you give the location for those who might be watching and have never been there?
It's on Memorial Road, just west of Mercy Hospital.
We're real proud of it. Doug, thanks.
Thank you.
And Wilderness Matters has done great work. He touched on it there, but that's a monumental project to take a nature center and to make it handicap accessible and meet all the requirements of such. We couldn't have done it without their volunteer and their donations.
Mayor, two weeks ago, we had the presentation on Phase 1 of the Map Street Trail that goes along I-40 now called the Will Rogers Trail, and today we have Phase 2 of that, which will be going out to bid. And so we have Russell Kent here this morning with MacArthur and Associates that'll show the alignment. So we've got, had Phase 1, went out to bid two weeks ago, Phase 2 will go out today, and then Phase 3 hopefully in two more weeks.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, this is the Phase 2, the center section of the Will Rogers Trail, formerly known as the I-44 West Trail. Quick overview of the trail. It is the center section of 3. The first section was approved at the last council meeting, and the third section will follow after this. The total construction budget is $3 million. I'm with MacArthur Associated Consultants, did the design, and we were assisted by Howard Fairbairn and Lee Engineering. The alignment itself is based on the alignment study, which was approved in late 2014, and the preliminary report of this project was approved in early 2015. This is an overview of that project. You can see it connects with the North Trail, Project 1 at Northwest 50th Street, approximately follows the I-44 corridor to Northwest 19th Street, where it will connect with the, the south section, Project 3. So it's about 2.77 miles in length, begins on the south side of Northwest 50th and Grand, and continues to the south side of Northwest 19th Street and Grand, crosses three major roads and a number of others, but 39th Expressway, 36th Street, and 23rd Street are all the signalized intersections in that area. Trails master plan defines the points of interest, or obviously other points of interest, but these are the ones defined by that plan, Portland Plaza and Will Rogers Park. This is a, the typical trail section, 12-foot trail, multi-use, will be 12 feet wherever possible. The lowest we always to 10 feet on the back of curb, but nearly 90% of it is 12-foot multi-use trail, as you see there. There are, I'm just going to walk through the trail, the three sections. This is the first one, and we'll work away from the north to the south end. You can see here, beginning on Northwest 50th and moving south, a couple of images here. This is the intersection with Northwest 50th and Grand where this trail begins and the North Trail ends. You can see between the wall and the parking lot, that's where the trail will go, is about a 15 to 18-foot wide area there. It's a little bit tight at the beginning, but it opens up, as you can see in this next picture. We have about 30 feet between the back of the wall and the fences of the property. That's ODOT, no Oklahoma City-owned property, and the trail will meander through that area, as you can see in this image, keeping as many trees as possible, crossing the city streets. In addition to the trail, we're also replacing the cedar fence, the privacy fence along the residents' properties, taking down the existing one and putting a new uniform fence. We're also installing some limited lighting in that area for safety concerns and helping improve some of the drainage issues that the residents there have. This is just a typical section of the wood fence, will be eight feet tall, cedar with galvanized steel posts with the smooth side facing toward the trail to discourage people who may want to climb into the property. So moving on to the second section, you can see we're coming out of Treadwill Hills neighborhood there on the left-hand side, continuing to follow Grand, follow the service road to St. Clair as it crosses Northwest 39th Expressway, and then following down St. Clair to 38th Street, and following that as it transitions back into becoming Grand Boulevard and Service Road and through Will Rogers Park. You'll note there is a proposed parking area, notice the trailhead parking within Will Rogers Park. It's approximately halfway between Lake Hefner and the Oklahoma River. This image is looking east from St. Clair. You can see the existing ODOT right-of-way fence. The trail will run alongside that fence, and that fence itself is going to be removed and replaced with a brand-new fence, so we have a one that's not falling down. This is Northwest Expressway Crossing, looking south and west. You can see there is existing infrastructure, but that's going to be upgraded, as you can see in the next image, new pedestrian crossing infrastructure, new timing signals, and new striping across the three sections of that road as we follow along St. Clair. This picture is looking north towards Northwest 36th Street. This is just at the entrance of Will Rogers Park, that's the exhibition center. That area is being modified slightly, as you can see from this image, we're increasing the radius on the corner of 36th and Grand to allow space for a wide 12-foot trail in that area and to give some separation between the trail and the traffic. And we're going to minimize the impact of that landscaped area by doing that as well. This is, again, in Will Rogers Park. This is the proposed trailhead parking area. You can see there's lots of mature trees in that area. This is the proposed parking, and there'll also be a shelter area and be lighting here too. We try to minimize impacts to trees. We're only losing two of the dozen or so trees in that area. We're able to design the parking around those trees as much as possible. The final section, coming out of the Will Rogers Park, continuing along Grand to Northwest 19th Street. There's a couple of images of that. This is that 23rd Street looking south, it's the Hippen Tire on, on the corner there. The only thing to note there, the parking area and the light that's within City Right Of Way, so we're going to modify some of that parking a little bit. There's no easements required there, but we will have more space than you can see. There'll be a trail along, on the back of the curb there. This is looking south, this is Northwest 27th Street going south. You can see there is a lot of room in this area. We've got 40 to 50 foot of right-of-way, so there's lots of room for the trail to meander through. The existing fence, just like we did at Treadwill Hills, will be removed and replaced, so we have a uniform fence along the trail. In many cases here, as you can see in this image, some of the homes don't have any fence at all, so we'll ensure there is a barrier between the trail. And this is Northwest 19th Street, again at Grand, and this is where we transition to the final section of the trail, the south section, which will take all the way to the Oklahoma River. Here's just an overview, the $3 million is the budget, based on the latest estimates. We're just a little bit under that, $2,919,000 is where we are with the, with the construction budget. All of the right-of-way has been acquired. Bid opening is later this month, and we hope to award construction contracts in September of this year, with construction beginning shortly after that, probably October, and expected completion of June of 2017. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Exciting project. Comments or questions from the council?
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Look forward to opening those bids. All right, any other comments or questions on the concurrence docket? I'm sorry, the consent docket before we vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now onto the concurrence docket. Do we have a motion here?
Move that out in such a dangerous situation.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine are items that require a separate vote, and we'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first two are in Ward Seven. The address is 5621 Northeast 122nd Street. It's currently inside a planned unit development, and it would be a new spud if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? The planning commission did approve this. And again, this is to allow, excuse me, this is to allow to expand the self-storage facility. Again, the planning commission did approve it. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A2 is also in Ward Seven at 11100 North Kelly. It's currently inside a simplified planned unit development, and it would be a new spud if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? This will allow beer sales in an indoor soccer field. The planning commission did approve. I move for approval.
All right, comments or questions on item 9A2? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A, and item 9B was introduced to council a couple of weeks back, and this transitions our bike-share program over to COPTA.
May I have a second?
All right, this is up for final hearing today. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 9B? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9C and D have to do with the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. Item 9C would confirm the assessment rule, and this is a public hearing. Did anyone show up to speak at the public hearing for item 9C? All right, how about a motion then to confirm the assessment rule?
May I have a second?
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then item 9D is the ordinance that would make it official. Is there a motion here?
May I have a second?
All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 9E was introduced at the last meeting. This is a public hearing. It would create some alterations to our signed ordinance. Did anyone show up today to speak at the public hearing for item 9E? All right, how about a motion to move that forward?
Move the item.
Cast your votes, and 9E passes unanimously. Item 9F was also introduced last meeting.
Move the item.
All right. And this came from the Bricktown Urban Design Commission. Did anyone show up today to speak at the public hearing for item 9F? All right, how about a motion then to move that forward?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, how about a motion?
Second.
Cast your votes. 9G passed unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures in the Historic Preservation Landmark District. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on the public hearing on 9H? All right, how about a motion to move that forward? All right, cast your votes, and 9H passed unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 9I? All right, how about a motion then on 9I?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9J? All right, how about a motion there?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9K is a public hearing regarding the removal of property from the abandoned buildings list. Is there a motion on 9K?
Seventeen.
Did anyone show up today to speak at the public hearing for 9K? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9L is a resolution that would rename Quail Creek Park after Berta Fay Rex. And this is an item that the council has information presented to them today.
Your Honor, may I speak to that?
Yeah, I would hope you would, Mark.
Just one second briefly. I put this material together because I wanted it to be a part of the permanent record to show why we were renaming the park. One of my favorite pictures is at page four of this presentation where Berta Fay Rex is tutoring kids at John Rex Charter Elementary School. You see, Berta Fay's husband was John Rex, which the school was named after. And so one thing I don't know if people know about, but John Rex and Berta Fay Rex, they were husband and wife. They were partners. They were inseparable. And they were visionaries when it came to childhood education. And I wanted people to remember Berta Fay in that all the things she did for the United Way, for her church, where she served as an elder and deacon, for the Philharmonic, many, many other things, the fight against breast cancer. She was an amazing woman, and I had the privilege of working with her on a board for over 10 years. And some would say she did it for 25 years, some would say she did it for 30 years, but in our neighborhood, every year she ran the Fourth of July Parade, and it ended at Quail Creek Park. And Berta Fay would have watermelon and oranges and fruit for the kids and drinks. She'd have a band playing. She was passionate about this Fourth of July Parade. She'd have some politician give a patriotic speech. She loved the park. And so I think it's just very befitting to rename the park after her, where she lived just a few blocks away, and she cared so much about the park. And so I'd ask you to adopt the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Can we assume that the homeowners association is supportive of this rename?
Yes, the president was at the Parks Commission meeting when the presentation was made. And I'd also like to thank Parks and Recreation, especially Alan Payne, the chair, for supporting this resolution.
Right.
Can I ask a question about just policy? This sounds great, and I completely accept for that. I bring it up only because somebody from the Parks Commission asked me about another park where it's named after someone, and there's a movement to change it to somebody else's name. What, I know we have a street policy where we don't name streets after. So what is the park policy? Because it seems like we have another issue coming up in the near future.
We do have a park policy, and I can't tell you the specifics of it, but I'll bet you Doug Cooper can.
I can tell you there's a higher application process you go through, and there's a committee that looks at it, that's a part of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay.
Again, good morning, Doug Cooper. As it relates to the naming policy, there are caveats in the park naming policy that was approved by the city council. And you are right there. When the parks are named for a human being, it stays for that individual unless, for some reason, more interpretative or things become apparent that that name would not be appropriate for the use of that park any further. What we think may happen in these circumstances, depending on what the Board of Commissioners' naming committee does, if they are in support of renaming it one name for a human being to another name for a human being, then the park commission would ask the city council to do a resolution changing their policy as it relates to the naming policy to allow the new name to be placed on that parcel.
Right now...
But it'll come back to the city council regardless.
Right now, the way the statute reads, that once you name it for a human being, it stays there unless there's an issue with that...
With that particular individual.
Okay. We'd have to change the policy to do something different.
Set it aside for that occurrence or do a resolution or something along those lines.
Okay, I appreciate. I'm sorry, that's tangential to this, but I appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Doug. All right, we have a motion on 9L?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Mark, thanks for your work on that. Item 9M is a resolution that would amend the Trees and Plants for Oklahoma City document, and Aubrey Hammond Tree is here from the Planning Department.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'd like to give you a little background on this document. In 2011, we made some amendments to our city's landscape ordinance that included a reference to this document, which is maintained separately from the ordinance. This document is meant to guide the selection of trees and plants that are appropriate for specific applications, such as screening outdoor equipment, providing buffers and shade for parking lot perimeters, and for streetscapes, in an attempt to try to help people select the types of plants that will grow to meet the design needs of the ordinance. We intended that this ordinance would be maintained separately so that we could keep it updated as industry standards change, new cultivars are developed, plant material. And over the years, in using this with the landscape architects that work with the Development Center, we've been able to compile a list of about 26 to 28 new trees that we think are appropriate for these applications. So this is basically incorporating those new trees onto the list and running it through council for you to receive the document. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Any questions for Aubrey on item 9M? And we're also going to be looking at item N, too.
Your Honor, I have a question. It may not be pertinent to this, but are there any species that we would not see as being appropriate to be planted, such as a cottonwood tree?
There's a separate list maintained, I believe it's in the Parks and Recreation section of the code, that prohibits planting certain species. I think it's a honey locust, the kind that grow the large thorns and the female cottonwood. But those really are maintained in a separate place. This document certainly doesn't include any trees that would be considered invasive or nuisance trees.
Okay, thank you.
Aubrey, this is incredibly helpful. Where do our citizens get a hold of it? Either as a printed document, I'm sure it's online on the city's website.
It is. It's on OKC.gov, and I believe there's a page under the Development Services Department for the Landscape Ordinance, where people can download this document. There's also the Putting Down Roots document that's linked that has a lot more tree species and guidance for residents trying to select good trees for Oklahoma City.
Great. And do we make a hard copy available here at City Hall? Are there hard copies available at City Hall?
And I'm sure they're available through the clerk.
Okay, great. Through the clerk's office. Thank you very much.
Aubrey, are you, is your department looking at the possibility of a tree farm? Or I forgot what you call it.
The Office of Sustainability has been looking into what it would take to be able to do a tree farm concept. They've been talking with Fort Worth on their models. So I think that there's ongoing discussions about what it would take for us to do something like that with the Parks Department.
And that's where you would take land that we own, grow the trees, and then people could buy, get the trees from us?
The concept, I believe, in Fort Worth is that they have trees that they grow to replace trees that are on parks' lands or in streetscapes that are available for immediate access.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are we ready to vote on item 9M? All right, how about a motion there?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then we have two votes on item N. Do you need to say anything else about those?
Item N, for the Comprehensive Plan Amendments?
These are just, yeah, receiving amendments to the comprehensive plan?
Right. I do. I have a presentation to walk you through these.
Okay.
Since we adopted our new Comprehensive Plan, Plan at OKC in July, we've had several development proposals that have come forward that have asked to amend the land use plan map in order to do specific types of development. Our new Comprehensive Plan has a very specific land use plan map, much more so than the previous Comprehensive Plan. It is intended to be able to be kept up-to-date through constant monitoring and making sure that our plan remains relevant and adaptable to the changing dynamics of our city. So these amendments are considered on a case-by-case basis as development happens. We have criteria that we evaluate the proposal or the request for changing a land use typology by, that they must conform to initiatives and policies in the plan. They must preserve our service efficiency and resources, and improve the functionality and the quality of the area. So the two amendments that we'll be presenting to you are Case One and Three for 2016. This is the land use plan map, and as I mentioned, it is very specific as to what type of development, development intensity goes across Oklahoma City. And you can see the two red boxes on the screen show the general area, one in Ward Seven at Northeast 122nd and Sooner, and one in Ward Two at around Classen and Wilshire, just east of Nichols Hills. So the first one, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, is just east of Sooner Road, north of 122nd Street. This is in an area that the Comprehensive Plan designates as open space. The open space designation was applied to land that is typically under public ownership. It is typically within the floodplain. It is not intended to be developed. It's intended to serve some sort of a drainage purpose or open space purpose. And the applicant came to request a change to the urban low-intensity designation. The existing conditions of the site were that this little piece of land was already zoned for a planned unit development in 2001 for the purpose of developing a personal storage unit is owned by the state, and they have a long-term lease for private use of this piece of land. And what they wanted to do was have a portion of that site be able to store recreational vehicles and boats on that site. So they had to come to the city and ask to rezone a piece of that land, but they couldn't do it under the current open-space land use designation. So they asked to change it to low-intensity urban. Go ahead. And I'll show you how this piece of land became designated open space. And if you can see, the green area shows the state of Oklahoma school lands ownership that extends down to the site, which is shown in a red box. And then the next thing is the floodplain. And as the applicant came in and asked for the development to do the personal storage, we noticed that this portion of that site is not within the floodplain. So therefore, you know, it's been developed for private use. When we consider a change in designation to the urban low-intensity, we have to look at the impact of that change. The impact of the change for open space is that we don't want to create areas of fragmentation of open space. This corner, which is outside of the floodplain, is really on the edge of the open space designation. It's already developed, and it's also adjacent to other urban low-intensity property.
This just came in.
We also make sure that the land use is compatible and consistent with what's around it, and this one was. And this land is also, has the full level of services for urban development, for city water, sewer, and fire. The transportation system allows access for development of this site, which is another critical piece of it, so it met all the checkmarks for being able to be classified as urban low-intensity. So staff recommended approval. Planning Commission held a hearing on June 9th and adopted it, and there were no protesters present. And if I can, I'll take you through this next one. The next one is located just east of Nichols Hills, east of Classen Boulevard, and south of Wilshire. It was designated as heavy industrial, which is a layer over the urban low-intensity category. The reason that this was designated that way is because it has a prevalence of existing industrial zoning on the property, and it is proximate to the railroad corridor. The applicant asked to change to urban low-intensity so they could develop less intense and mixed-use-type development. The background of this site is that the northern portion of it that was zoned I-2 has never been developed. It's been vacant. The southern portion of this site is a mix of office, light, industrial, and residential uses. So as you know, if you drive up Classen, Nichols Hills on your left, and there's just a mix of different types of development in this area. They came in, the applicant came in to request a PUD to rezone a portion of this larger site to do a mixed-use development that would be consistent with what's happening on the west side of Classen and to the south. The land use typology that was designated for this heavy industrial area is meant to accommodate industrial uses that are difficult to integrate with other uses because they generate more negative impacts, heavy traffic, noise, and odors. Heavy industrial is also concentrated away from residential areas so that it doesn't impact them negatively. We try to preserve prime land that would be good for heavy industrial uses that has attributes that they need, such as access to the highway and rail. And we also try to make sure that those high-intensity heavy industrial uses are preserved on that site, so manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, office, industrial. Therefore, this applicant who wanted to do a mixed-use development couldn't do it under the heavy industrial zoning, and asked to be lifted to urban low-intensity. What we consider when we look at this is the existing zoning. As you can see, the subject area parcel that is I-2 at the top is where the mixed-use development is being proposed. And if I click one more time, the makeup of this land, about 80% of it is I-2, but there is a mix of office, residential, and light industrial. And the character of the area, if you can see this land use map, by looking at all of the different colors represented on this map, you can see it's a pretty mixed bag. This is kind of typical of our urbanized areas that have residential, office, industrial mixed together. And the proximity to rail, even though this is along a rail corridor, there's not a spur immediately accessible to the site, so the site really wouldn't be conducive to a large-scale heavy industrial use. The railroad indicated to the applicant that there was no intention of building a spur to make the site accessible, but there is still quite a bit of industrial land to the east of the BNSF line that's preserved under the heavy industrial layer. So again, we evaluate the impact of the change of this use, and that our heavy industrial land does remain intact and viable, especially to the east side of the railroad corridor. And we look at the compatibility of the change. So switching from heavy industrial to urban low-intensity really is... So switching from heavy industrial to urban low intensity really is consistent with the land use and development patterns in this area. This area also has complete access to all city water, sewer, and fire service under our urban low level of service standards, and the transportation system is certainly in place and conducive to this. In fact, the comp plan has a transit-oriented development node at Western and Britton, so we are encouraging transit use and development for mixed-use development like this one. So staff did recommend approval to change this to urban low intensity, and Planning Commission held a hearing on June 23rd, and no protestants were there, and they adopted the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, and we're here at council today for you to receive those. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
All right. Aubrey's been informing us on items that are under 9N. These are resolutions to amend the Comprehensive Plan.
I have a comment about it. One of the things I hear from the chamber frequently is that the lack of large-size industrial tracks that they could develop. Considering where this track is located, the fact that it's zoned I-2 already probably wouldn't make any difference in terms of if a big industry came there, the protest around it to do something about it would be pretty high. But I wonder if that piece of it was looked at, that, I hear it all the time. Basically, I hear a lot of it because I have a lot of vacant land, and they want bigger and bigger and bigger tracks to develop big industry on. And so anytime a track starts to, that's out there that anything encroaches on it, I catch it from the chamber folks about that. Are they, I'm sure they're okay with this, I think.
We are.
Given where most of them live.
We have regular conversations about that, and I think that if a heavy industrial use wanted to locate on those 26 acres, it would have a lot of compatibility issues because of the way that our city's grown up around it with residential uses. And it has not been developed under I-2, that zoning, forever because it really doesn't meet the large-scale heavy industrial needs of that site. So I don't think that this was really a piece of land that the chamber would have thought is a loss. When we worked on the Comprehensive Plan with them, we identified areas that would be appropriate for large employment lands and industrial uses, which are reserved under the comp plan as employment reserve.
What's the lower acre criteria that fits it in that category of?
For heavy industrial, I'm not sure that there really is a low end for certain types of needs. I think you can do heavy industrial uses on, you know, small uses on several acres up to large manufacturing plants.
One of the problems that I face, and John has the same problem in that portion of Capitol Hill that he represents, in that years ago, all that land where people live was rezoned industrial. And so when somebody wants to put an industrial use right in the middle of a neighborhood, they don't have any problem because the house was built on I-1 or I-2 or some other. Have we ever looked at going back and redoing those so that those don't happen, those things don't happen by right?
Yes, as zoning is granted by right, it exists, and someone comes in to change it, we do have the opportunity to consult the Comprehensive Plan in terms of compatibility. And that's where we keep things relevant to what's happening and protecting uses.
In this process, I'd like for you to look at everything. It's mainly in John's ward now. It used to be in my ward. It's that area that's south of the river, east of Shields, from down to 44 Streets, exactly John's ward, and it runs east to probably eastern. There's just so many tracks in there that are zoned for residential, triplexes, or zoned for I-1. And you can do those things by right, and you can put them right down the middle of the neighborhoods because the Oklahoma City oil field was just built all around that, and it was all, but it's not that way anymore. Most of the producing wells are gone, the derricks are all down, and it poses a problem for some of those neighborhoods that are struggling if a guy can open up a metal recycling plant out and tear his house down and open a metal recycling plant up next to him. So I'd kind of like for you to just look at that. It's always bothered me when I had those cases before, and seeing that we're willing to look at the change in the underlying zone based on what's happened, I'd like for you to look at that area if you would. I should have said something to John before that, but it's just something that, it's a hangover from representing him for 15 years or so myself.
Yes, certainly.
Yeah, I just really would like to compliment the process, Aubrey. This is kind of the first test we've had against the new Comprehensive Plan, and the process you put in place to evaluate whether changes should be made appears to be excellent and really well thought out.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
It's going to work.
Anybody else want to comment before we vote? All right. Do we have a motion on 9N1?
Move that.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then 9N2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thanks, Aubrey. All right. Under 9O, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9P, understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9Q, it looks like we do need executive session. Is there a motion to move 9Q to executive session?
Q1 first, and then Q2.
Okay. All right. Yeah, Francis is pointing out there's a couple of votes here. So I'll take that motion then on 9Q1 to take that item into executive session. Cast your votes on that, and it passed unanimously. And then item 93 is to accept the selection.
9.
Well, that would be after executive session.
Right. 92, we need to go into executive session.
Okay, 9.
They're parallel issues, but separate.
I see. Okay. So we're voting now on item 9Q2 to move into executive session.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
And then the rest of Q, we can discuss after we get out of executive.
Q3 would be the result of the executive session, perhaps.
Correct.
And item 9Q4, is that also would take place after the executive session?
Oh, Q4 through 7.
4 through 7. So we'll hold up on all of those. All right. So we'll move on to item 9R, and that's claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9R? All right. How about a motion to approve the claims and the denial of the claims? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any of those items?
Move the item.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And that brings us to items from council. And we have an item here on a public hearing on the Anexation/Deannexation Committee. Is there anyone here that hoped to speak on item 11A, which is a public hearing today on a deannexation/annexation issue?
We do have a presentation by, maybe by Aubrey. Ken Bryant was supposed to be here to discuss this issue.
This is, this is a deannexation item that has come to the city several months ago. It had gone back to go through a petition process that came back through the clerk's office, which this is now a formality for the Deannexation Committee, which has already reviewed this, to have council refer it back to Planning Commission. It's a very, it's a very complicated process, but it goes to council ad hoc committee for review. It goes to Planning Commission for a recommendation, and it will be coming back to city council for your consideration with all of the recommendations from all of the people who've reviewed it before you. So this will be the process we'll be going through in the future on these. Well, they'll come to you first for you to refer them back to Planning Commission, and you'll see it in a couple of months in detail.
Okay. So this has moved through the council committee, and now it's going to the planning commission.
It already has been reviewed by the committee several times. It's been reviewed once by the Planning Commission, and it's meant to go back to the Planning Commission upon your referral.
All right. Is there a motion then to push this to the Planning Commission? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11B is to accept the resignation of Municipal Judge Stephen Tolson, effective at the end of the year. Okay. Cast your votes on item 11B. It passed unanimously. Item 11C is a resolution that requests the establishment of a joint task force with several representatives, and this came from Councilman Greenwell and Stonecypher. Would either of you like to talk a little bit more about what you have in mind?
Thank you, your honor. I'll just be brief on this presentation, and then Councilman Stonecypher may want to expand on it, and then either one of us would be pleased to answer any questions. But I think everyone recognizes that the past, really, 18 months, not just the past 12 months or past year, the states experienced some challenges in developing a budget and operating within its budgetary limitations. That was demonstrated back in May when they passed the budget for this current year. Part of the shortfall was made up through the use of long-term debt, which is a very problematic approach to covering your operating expenditures, is to use long-term debt. Plus, it's obvious they're having difficulties meeting the basic requirements as to why we have governments. They're not able to meet the demands of basic services that governments are to perform. Now, we could just say, well, that's their problem, they'll figure it out, or we hope that they'll figure it out. But, you know, other government entities are experiencing some difficulties here in the city of Oklahoma City, municipalities in general. We are limited as far as our main source of revenue for operation purposes to sales tax, and we've certainly experiencing, experienced some problems this past year. But yet, cities that have continued to show strong growth in their revenue base, such as the city of Moore, their officials are calling for changes in the basic structure as to how municipalities within the state of Oklahoma can receive funding for basic services that we have a responsibility to provide. So what this resolution is asking for is that the state convene a task force made up of representatives from the state level, from the county level, from the municipal level, to let us all come together and see if we can address and create a more sustainable, a more steady source of revenue that does not create the problems that both the state and, to a lesser degree, our city has experienced recently. And I think we can do that. There's a lot of data out there. We have the information. I think we've got the ability to make some significant changes, which will have long-term benefits for the citizens of Oklahoma and the citizens of Oklahoma City.
Mark?
Thank you, your honor. Just to echo upon that, David kind of sparked this idea. The genesis of it was a trip, I think, to Tennessee where he was planning a wedding for a family member and started looking at some things that were going on in Tennessee as far as ad valorem taxes, sales taxes, et cetera. And that led us to City Manager Jim Couch, who provided us some materials, including the Academy Town Hall, which in 2015 kind of started taking a look at this issue. And it was entitled Funding the Gap: Strong Cities, Strong States, A Look at Municipal Revenue. And what sparked my interest or was interesting to me was it says, "Oklahoma is the only state in which municipalities are almost entirely dependent on sales tax for general operations." So that led me to start looking at, are there ways to look at other sources of revenue? Are there budgetary cuts that could be made that could help not only at the state level but also the local level? And one of the states I came across that I tried to look at that was similar to Oklahoma was the state of Indiana. I didn't realize Indiana has a significant oil and gas production in that state. And I was looking at their budget last year in 2015, and they had a $210 million surplus, and they also have $2.14 billion in reserves. And so what are they doing different than what we are doing? And so all I would ask, and I think it's a great idea that David came up with, is to have a task force look at this. I'm not asking to step on anybody's toes. I'm not trying to be critical of anybody. I'm just advocating that we look at some new ideas for looking, for dealing with old, old problems.
Okay.
Thank you.
If approved, Jim, would this go to the governor? What would we do with the resolution if we passed it?
Great question. What we're going to do is get with our lobbyists and talk about the multiple, whether we go through the state legislative leaders and see if we can get an interim study or go through the governor's office, but we'll be exploring whatever options there are at state government.
So the idea is to make a more comprehensive examination of all levels of government, instead of everyone working in a silo in the state looking after their taxation and the cities looking after theirs, a more comprehensive look at how everybody's funded and how government's funded in general.
Sure. I want people to see what problems we're having at the local government level, and some people may not understand that.
No, I'm sure, not everybody does, that's for sure. Any other comments or questions on this issue?
Would we anticipate our lobbyists would ask about a gas tax in particular and how that might, if it's, they would look at all?
I think they would look at everything.
Okay.
Ed, if I may address that issue. I think what we're seeing, just to confirm the fact that other people recognize the problems, are issues such as President Born's initiative to push forward a separate sales tax to fund higher education and technology centers, plus some money for common ed. But you've got to look at the details, and you'll see that higher ed and especially two universities are going to certainly benefit greatly from this effort. You'll see more efforts on a standalone basis, and what we're suggesting is that let's do a comprehensive review, looking at all sources of revenue, excise taxes, income taxes, ad valorem taxes, sales taxes. Compare ourselves, both at the state as well as local level, with other states, especially those states that have done quite well. As Mark mentioned, you know, Tennessee really struck a chord with me. They have a tremendous overall common education system. They're thought of as being one of the better states as far as common ed. A lot of it, you know, from leadership that they've had at various levels of government. There's no reason we couldn't be similar to them as far as certain basic services. And I constantly hear the issue that, well, there's a group that just wants to, in a sense, starve the government. Let's keep, you know, reducing its current sources of revenue and weed out waste. Well, there's a group that's many times attributable to, say, the Tea Party group that promotes that quite a bit. They've had over eight years to address those areas, and for example, the Oklahoma Tax Commission pays out over $55 million a year in fees to tag agents throughout the state of Oklahoma. There's no need for that system to stay in place. There's an opportunity to save $55 million for the state of Oklahoma, yet no one's focusing on that. There's numerous other examples. All I'm saying is, let's convene, let's address all those items in a transparent, open manner, and see what we can accomplish.
All right. All right. We're voting on item 9C, and this is a resolution that would request the state to work with other levels of government to have a more comprehensive examination of the tax policies of the state.
Move the item.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thanks for your work on that. All right. Items from council continues. Mark, do you have anything else?
Anything else to say?
All right. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, we lost Senator E. Melvin Porter, who was the first black state senator. His services will be this upcoming Saturday at 11 o'clock at St. John Baptist Church. As we talk about civil rights in Oklahoma City and all across our country, Senator E. Melvin Porter was one of the ones who stood on the line, standing up for equal rights for African-Americans, not just African-Americans, but everyone. So he will be missed. With me today, I have Colonel Devon Wooden. Colonel Wooden, will you please stand? Colonel Wooden is the commander of the Real Rogers Air Force Base, which is the National Guard. I am a part of the Tinkers ComStar program, and so a couple of months ago, I had the opportunity to job shadow the colonel, and so he is here today job shadowing me. And so I just want to say thank you for your leadership in serving our country and serving our state.
Meg?
I just also wanted to pass along my condolences for the passing of Judge Deason this last week. He's a great servant and did great work in the area of judicial reform and some other things. Condolences to his family.
I would like to echo those comments. He was a great man.
All right. David?
No statement.
I want to echo John's comments about Melvin Porter. I knew Melvin, and he was a, he and Claire Lupa stand out as the people that were really out on the floor, the cutting edge of what was going on in the late '50s and early '60s. Neither of them, I think, got the credit that they deserved. I mean, Ms. Lupa had successful sit-ins two years before it happened in Greenville. And, you know, when people talk about the sit-in movement, they always talk about Greenville, but she did that successfully two years before the Greenville thing. So, and Melvin was just a real stand-up guy and worked hard, and I want to echo my concern about him. He was a good man. One other thing, I wanted to thank Susan Cole for her contribution of a piece of art that is located at the new park at Kitchen Lake. It's a sea turtle. It's a perfect, it's a turtle, but it's the perfect piece of art for that facility. It's really nice. It was given to her by her husband, Alan Cole, who was a big-time civic leader for a long time before he passed away. And they had Cole's garden, and they're spreading those things out around the city. And this is just, it couldn't be better. It's in a perfect location. Doug took pictures of it and sent it to me from three or four different angles, and it's just really nice. It's 119th and Sooner, and anybody gets a chance to go out there ought to look at it. Really a nice addition to that. That park's a fishing park from right now. It's a nice place to fish, and that's about, but that turtle is just, it couldn't have been, couldn't have been nicer. I want to thank Susan again for donating it to us.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Ryan Lerts and the neighbors in Musgrave-Pennington for inviting me to their meeting last night and for the dialogue that went on between the principal Buchanan School, the Neighborhood Association, making plans for Neighborhood Night Out coming up in October. A great event. They've averaged over 200 in the last three years, and they're looking to bust that number in this year. So I wish them well. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed? Four very brief items. One is revisiting Zika. For the first time in the country's history, the CDC has issued a travel warning to an American city, that being Miami, this week, for pregnant women not to travel there. We're the only country with an outbreak that doesn't have funding approved by its national government, so we're kind of on our own. We were, I was relieved, I felt better after hearing the city-county tell us that the species of mosquito that's responsible, Aedes aegypti, is not found in Oklahoma. Unfortunately, last week, we learned that it's now moved into southwestern Oklahoma. So it's not in Oklahoma City, but it's moving farther than it ever has, and it's on our doorstep. It's a material change of condition that requires vigilance, I think. Second, I asked a time back about if Jim could look at the salaries of the mayor and council and compare it to peer cities. They looked at 14 cities. They found us to be an extreme outlier, I would say. And I don't know that there's any interest in doing anything about it, but we have about a month where we potentially could. I don't even know, obviously Mick's working full-time, plus if the federal government increased minimum wage, I'm not even sure Mick's salary would be legal, it's so low. But an idea might be, what if, I think maybe the legislature did this, Pete was telling me, just instead of having it a raise or a decrease, just equilibrate the salaries with our peer cities like we do for other things. Maybe, so it might go up or down, but just equilibrate with our peers, because right now, we're an extreme outlier, and if that's okay with everybody, it's okay with me. But I just, it's worth thinking about. Third, the GeoBond is coming up next year. Our staff has said that they'll have their final list of projects in about, in the spring, so about nine months. I think we're ready in Ward Two. So if we could have a rough, rough draft, a list of park drainage, street improvements that were, that's kind of our big, not holding anybody to anything, not, it's a rough, rough draft, but get that list and put it out to the people of Ward Two. I'd like the people to start to process that and be involved in the process. So the sooner we can get that rough, rough draft, not holding anybody to anything, but the sooner we get that, the better. Fourth and finally, we're quickly approaching our five-year window of opportunity on the IMSA. I just, I'd like to hear from Chief Bryant a formal assessment of his idea of either, we either stay with IMSA or his proposal. My understanding is, we're really talking about outsourcing it to a third party, like paramedics-plus or the way we've always done it. It would either be done by IMSA or the fire department. I just, I'd like if Chief Bryant can do a formal study of what that would look like, the risks and benefits of doing it ourselves, having the, are we doing that?
When we met, when you and I met a month or so ago about that, you expressed some concerns about that, so I'm having the finance department take a look, because you expressed some concerns about the administration, what the cost would be and what the potential savings would be. So the finance department, not fire department, is evaluating that. I've got a draft, and I hope they have something to do in the next couple of weeks.
Will they make a presentation for the public or?
I don't know. I haven't decided that yet. We can talk about that.
Okay.
But we are, but based upon our conversation with you, I don't know when that was, Councilman, a month, six weeks ago, we are preparing.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Jane?
I agree with the bond idea that Ed had, having a, kind of an overall, big-picture ideas of what in each section of the city. I think that would be helpful at this point, so whenever we have that, I would certainly like to see it.
Jim, Councilman Shidib brought up the Zika virus and, you know, perhaps at least understanding the appropriate way that we would fund some sort of effort if necessary. Does that typically come from the city-county board of health and that comes from the state? Is that usually the way that the funding works?
Generally, this could be, it might be unique, but that would be typically how it would be handled.
Okay. All right. City manager reports.
Very briefly, Mayor, there are, on the agenda is a revenue enforcement report from June, July 15 through June 16. There's the June Quarterly Investment Report, and there's the July Sales Tax and Use Collections. I want to highlight the July Sales and Use Tax collections. Run a projections 0.9% starting out the year. And I've never seen my finance department so pleased about a number below projection, because last month, if you recall, it was over 7%, and coming in just 0.9% below, it's, we were fearing worse. We expect to have our August sales tax check sometime this week. Don't have anything as of yet. And so we're in very interesting times. We are working to bring Russell Evans to council to give an interim economic outlook update, and I believe that's scheduled for the 16th.
Okay.
I mean, Jim, I won't be here for that meeting, but one point that needs to be brought up with that. I think it's well documented, you know, we talk in terms, from an economic standpoint, the multiplier effect. So when a new, say, manufacturer comes in to an area, it generates so much additional benefits other than its direct salaries and its direct profits. I think those who like to forecast things failed to recognize the significance of the multiplier effect of the oil and gas industry. It reached so far and continues to this day to where individual electricians and welders and other just general people have been really significantly impacted by the downturn in energy prices. So please bring that up when they come here in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Jim, getting back to the Zika topic, what about having someone from the city-county board of health come in and brief the council on their concerns or what the appropriate measures would be?
It's a change in conditions, as Councilman Shidib. We did have one come in four or five months ago, but we can have them come in again.
And am I right to assume that the risk would be greatly reduced after the first freeze of the fall? So, you know, we're looking really at three months here, you know, to at least get through the calendar year of 2016. Okay. Well, I think it is good to be prepared, because when it happens, or if it happens, the preparation will probably serve us well. All right, citizens to be heard.
My name is Yassin Atawi. My address is 320 North Villa Avenue. The subject that I want to talk about today and I have great concern about is the mechanical inspection required by the city of Oklahoma City for vehicle-for-hire and the fraud surrounding this matter. The City Ordinance Section, Chapter 56-41, requires the mechanical inspection for vehicle-for-hire to be performed by a master AC-certified technician. But the regulation and the chapter is very short from any requirements, and any such, any company performing any inspection, city license bond, garage liability insurance, and some sort of code of ethics. The regulations like on-road inspection, on-lift inspection, record keeping, and age of the vehicles, because here in Oklahoma City, we still have like 20 years' old cars still running as vehicle-for-hire, 1996 models. At the time being, the mechanical inspections are being sold like basketball tickets on streets. What happened, vehicles get aligned on a parking lot, and there is one person that does the mechanical inspection. He did 90% of the fleets of this year. Mainly, he just copied the VIN number and signed the paper and handed it to the driver or handed it to the vehicle-for-hire companies. That mainly takes only two minutes for every car, which is very unprofessional, very inappropriate, and as it is a public safety concern. I've been working on this for a couple of, with a couple of gentlemen. The first one is the city inspector-for-hire, and second person is the legal counsel here, Haley Rosen. I had a meeting with her, and I had three meetings with the city inspector. At the time being, they were busy because we had the yearly inspection. He had to run like 700 cars or 800 cars. And solid proofs were provided to the city inspector 10 days before the annual mechanical inspection that was held on May the 9th. And he promised me an investigation, but he went ahead with accepting these fraudulent inspections. A second meeting, he was very productive, as was quoted by Mrs. Haley Rosen. She was really happy. She was notified. And also Mr. Boyd Fuller, Boyd Fulton, he was at the meeting too. What I did concerning this matter, I give proposals and other forms and requirements from other states as an example of how the mechanical inspection is performed elsewhere in order to counter this fraud. The process was very normal at the beginning, but it seems like both the city employees, they kind of gave up or dropped the ball on this. Friday morning, my attorney did receive an email saying, "Please thank your clients for their documentation and information. Due to these documents and city's own internal research, the city was able to handle the situation internally. At this time, the city will not be moving forward with the new policy regarding this taxi inspection. This is a matter of public safety and has legal ramifications and should be handled with great intention, and I'm hoping as an OKC resident that you take any necessary actions to correct this matter. Thank you very much for your attention, and I'm ready for any questions you might have."
Okay. You know, our police chief has stepped into the room when he saw the subject matter, and he generally deals with these issues in the police?
Right.
And why don't you visit with him, and then he can update the council on the results of your efforts and what he thinks. All right? Thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much.
All right, he's right behind you there.
You know, Mayor, I didn't even realize we were still inspecting cabs, and we let Uber and Lyft in here with no inspections. So we still have, do we still have that full inspection program on taxi cabs?
Yeah, Councilman, I believe that those types of requirements that were required of the taxi cabs before are still in effect. There's a lot of those things I don't think were changed. I'd have to follow up on that. I don't want to swear by that, but I'm pretty sure that that inspection is.
I would like us, and I'm pleased that Sky brought this up, I'd like for us to look at what we require cabs to do now in light of, that was my concern about it before, is they were, Uber and Lyft were able to compete because they didn't have to follow all the regulations that the cabs do.
Right, and a lot of the regulations that Uber, Uber still has to have followed certain regulations. It's just done through the corporation. We don't have any, there's no accountability to us for that. We just, we depend on the corporation to do those background checks, to make sure that the inspections, and inspections may be part of that, I just don't recall.
Although I don't like that process, I thought the one we had was fine. I would like to see us look at whether we ought to be putting these people through hoops, if you can just.
If I remember right, I think we had that amendment, we had that amendment to get rid of the vehicle inspections, but I don't think it passed.
If we can go back just for a minute, I think this is what happened, but we were trying to level the playing field between Lyft and Uber and the taxi cabs. We had the fee issue and whether you picked up, and we had taxi zones, and we had inspections, and we had background checks on drivers and a number of issues. And at that time, we passed an ordinance that required Uber and Lyft to have vehicle inspections. After that happened, the state preempted us from having any regulations. So when we passed the ordinances, it was a level playing field between the taxi cabs, but now that we're preempted, Chief City's right, it's regulated for Uber and Lyft under the state corporation component.
But it only preempted Uber and Lyft. It didn't preempt.
I would like to look at it again. If that's the case, I'd like to look at it again.
One other factor in this, you know, the shared industry has a rating system, so a person that's using one of those vehicles would have some sort of feedback on previous experience.
Right.
Where if you're getting a cab, you would not generally have a rating system in place, and so you would not have any sort of reassurance that someone has inspected the vehicle or knows the driver or anything like that. So it is not apples to apples when you're talking about the shared economy and the taxi cab business.
I know. It's a free ride against a regulated system. It's not apples to apples. But just that one thing has certainly done weight, in my view, in favor of the cabs. It's not a leveling device, that's just the way it worked out.
Councilman, let's go and put together a report and bring something back to you on that issue.
All right. We have executive session. Council has returned from executive session. We're on item 9Q. This has to do with our collective bargaining with the IAF.
And it's, and I will be filing a written request for a special election with the city clerk.
Received.
And it's been received by the city clerk.
Okay. And do we need a verbal motion to call an election date?
Do we need to receive the?
We need to.
We need a motion on Q4, Mayor.
Okay. Hold on, let me turn the page. Okay.
I'll make a motion on Q4.
All right. All right, we have a motion in a second to acknowledge, confirming the delivery. Okay, on Q4. Okay. Cast your votes on Q4. It passes 6-0. And now a motion on the specific date?
On Q5.
Q5 is next.
Okay. We have a motion in a second on Q5. Cast your votes. It passes. It passes 6-0.
And now Q6 is the, where you need the election date.
All right. Is there a motion on Q6 with the date?
I'd make a motion to approve Q6, the election date of January 10.
Of 2017.
10 of 17.
All right. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. It passes 6-0.
And then if someone will make a motion on the publication dates on the resolution, which is Q6, I will provide those to you. And those dates would be December 21st, the 28th, and January the 4th on the resolution.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Then if you make, go on to Q7. If you make a motion to insert the, both the, the election date first on that.
Is that the publication date or election date?
Election date, January the 10th. It's election date.
So I'd make a motion. Q7, insert a special election date, January 10.
Correct. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
And then on the publication dates, we can publish those the same three days. We'll amend the resolution to conform to that.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes, I will make a motion. And January 4th. January 4th.
I'd make a motion. Publication date, special election.
All right, motion in a second, and council votes, and it's 6-0. That's it? Word adjourned. Thanks, everybody.